Okay, so I think I'm live and good to go right now. Um, but give me half a second, guys, while I try and get to where I need to go. I need to get to control room. Okay, so I think, uh, there we go. We got some stuff coming in, I think. Um, so let's see here. Okay, let me pull up control room. Come on. There we go. All right, so now if you are in the chat, I should be able to see you. And let's see here. Okay, so it looks like right now that I'm working without any live viewers. Um, but I'm just gonna put a most, uh, uh, notice in the chat real quick. So if people join in a little bit late, they don't feel weird about it. Um, but give me half a second, guys. I do have a couple of questions that have come in over remind, so I will be using that. Um, and then hopefully other people will join in as we go. So, okay. Sorry about like the shake there. Be nicer if I had a separate webcam altogether. Um, okay, so let's see here. Two, 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 okay. All right, guys, so I do have several questions that have already come in for me. So I'm gonna hope that this is useful for you guys. Um, and I'll go ahead and start addressing the questions that I have. Um, as you join, excuse me, as you join, feel free to ask questions. Um, in the live chat, I'll check it occasionally. Similarly, I'll be checking, um, the Twitter account as well. So if you want to tweet at me, um, you can tweet at Galloway teaches, or you can use the hashtag Ask Miss Galloway, Ms. Galloway, not miss. Um, and I'll get to you as quickly as I can. So today's study session is going to be over Nigeria, uh, the civil society, society and ethnic divisions as kind of our subdivision with regards to how things work. Um, so let me go ahead and pull up remind and I'll start working off the questions that I'm getting in through there. Um, so let me see here. Okay, I am going to start with, I think Jordan had some questions for me. He had several, so thank you, Jordan, for sending me the, in these questions. I'll try to go and, excuse me, my pardon, pardon me. Um, I just like walked in the door a grand total of like five seconds ago, so pardon me. Okay, so, um, I do have a bunch of questions from Jordan, so thank you very much for that, Jordan. Um, so here we go, um, just to kind of start us off. So Jordan wants to know, can I please explain the Biafran civil war? All right, it's kind of a big ask, but we'll go for it. Um, so Biafra is a region in southern Nigeria, particularly around, um, particularly around the Niger River, River Delta. Um, remember, you can either say it Niger or Niger. I tend to kind of say Niger River and then Niger River Delta. Um, couple of reasons why, first of all, Niger is the country through which most of the Niger River flows. Um, and Niger River Delta, I tend to say simply because that's kind of what the British said when they were colonial, when they were colonizing it, that's the term they used. Um, so at any rate, so Biafra tends to be, um, it's the, the southern region, uh, primarily around the Niger Delta, uh, uh, region. Um, and it is oil rich. It tends to be populated primarily by Igbo people. Although there are lots of other tribal groups in that area, lots of different, um, sort of ethnicities in that general region. Um, but the predominant, uh, uh, group right there is the Igbo. So what occurred was immediately following Nigerian independence in 1960. Um, things looked pretty good. We've talked about this several times. Nigeria had a fairly decent setup, actually, all things told, um, as of 1960, in terms of its economic stability. There were lots of other problems with Nigeria, but it wasn't economic. So what occurred is in 1960, everything looked kind of okay-ish until the first parliamentary elections occurred in 1965. So they were on a parliamentary system then, and a parliamentary system meant, of course, that if your party won the most seats in parliament, then you also got to pick the prime minister. Um, or as it was initially called, the governor general and then prime minister for Nigeria. So that was an issue because it tied the executive to the legislative branch. And that tended to mean that if your political party won the legislature, you also had the executive and they tended to be of the same ethnic group. So there was a lot of stress about that. And in particular, there was a lot of concern about that in the southwestern region, um, which is sometimes called Yoruba land. Um, it's the area that is primarily dominated by people of, who speak Yoruba variations and have Yoruba cultural traditions. Um, so in the southwest, um, the area kind of surrounding what is Lagos and what was then called the Western Region. Um, that area during the parliamentary elections of 65, the regional government collapsed altogether. Um, it's kind of a complicated reason as to why, but it had a lot to do with the fact that it was a parliamentary system, that there were a lot of ethnic tensions in that region, and so the regional government collapsed. And that meant that the central government of Nigeria in 1965 sent in the military to try and stabilize the rest of Western Region. They primarily sent in military, um, forces coming from primarily the eastern region, which was dominated by Igbo's and the northern region, which was down dominated by Hausa and Hausa Fulani people. So you have these outside groups coming into the Yoruba speaking area. That didn't play particularly well. Ultimately, what occurred was a group of Igbo military officers led a military coup d'etat against the general government of Nigeria in 1966. There was immediately a counter coup, um, wherein you had Haus leaders from the north overthrow the Igbo leaders from the south, southeast. And as a result, those Igbo military leaders kind of pulled back into the eastern region. They kind of retreated from where they were in Lagos. They retreated back into kind of the, the Delta region. Um, and over the next couple of years, they sort of hardened their positions. Ultimately, coming to the conclusion as of 1967, my apologies, um, that there really wasn't a future in Nigeria being a united country, that there were far too many ethnic divisions in Nigeria to ever have any sort of unity. Um, and as a result, they made the argument that Nigeria should instead break up into different states. And this is what they wanted. They wanted something called the Republic of Biafra to be created, which would have been in the south, primarily southeast of what is today Nigeria in the Delta region. Um, and that was a big problem for a number of reasons. Well, first of all, it actually had quite a bit of international support. Um, they had a couple of major political leaders who are really good at kind of pulling together um, outside supports. They did have a number of outside supporters with this notion of sort of splintering Nigeria into different states. They also had an economic resource that the rest of the country didn't have, and that was oil, of course, which is one of the reasons why so many other people in Nigeria said, no, 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 you don't get to break away. You don't get to succeed and become your own country. The other issue was, of course, that, um, Nigeria was brand new. They didn't really have the resources or the institutional stickiness to kind of resolve this without going into a military situation. So as a result, the result of the Biafran civil war that breaks out, um, which occurs from 67 to 70, and it is incredibly bloody and hard fought. Um, it's kind of fought through like the mangrove forests and the swampy areas of the Delta. Um, and it kills somewhere in the million, in the half million to three hundred, three million people range. Um, it's hard to get data on that stuff. Um, but as a result, what occurs is like this hardening of this notion that Nigeria's problems can really only be solved through the military. Um, so what you have is these Igbo military leaders who in 65 stage a coup, 65, 66, 65. Um, they stage a coup against the general government. And then in 66, there's a counter coup led by Hausa leaders from the north. And then you have essentially all the way through the seventies, um, through up until 1979, you have nothing but authoritarian military leaders, um, who kind of fake their way through looking like a democracy, but it's a, it's like one coup after another, after another. Um, so the Biafran civil war is a big deal because it destabilizes the country. Um, it forces kind of this acceptance of military rule, which I don't think would have happened otherwise. It also kind of expresses that regional and ethnic distrust, which is such a big deal in Nigerian politics, and it gets into playing into the resource trap. Because without the Biafran civil war, it might have been possible for Nigeria to, you know, develop some other economic resources, move more into a domestic market, um, increase their, um, investment into sort of modernized agriculture, all of those sort of things. Instead, the government just drilled heavily into oil because that was a quick way to pay for what they needed to do. Um, so I hope that helps, Jordan. Um, I know that that's a bit long-winded, but there you go. Um, let's see here. Uh, Jordan's next question has to do again with the political history of Nigeria. He wants to know who was Usman Danforio? Um, why did he found the Sokoto Caliphate? Okay, so Danforio, um, was a Fulani scholar. He was a cleric. Um, he was trained in terms of like Quranic studies and Islamic law. Um, and he was Fulani in terms of his ethnicity. Fulani, like frequently you hear it just kind of hyphenated Hausa Fulani, but historically, they were very different groups of people. And the Fulani tended to be poorer than the Hausa largely because the Hausa tended to be sedentary agriculturalists and the Fulani did not. Um, they were pastoralist initially. And as a result of that, um, during much of the 17th, 18th centuries, there was a lot of discrimination, um, by Hausa people against Fulani people. So Danforio comes to sort of prominence in the early 19th century. And he is Fulani, he's been trained as a cleric. Um, and he really kind of focuses in on sort of like the social justice aspect of Quranic teachings. Um, that's really what interests him is, is kind of focusing on this notion of radical equality through the Quran. Um, and he basically comes to the conclusion that, um, the Hausa Muslim population up in the north of what is today Nigeria was largely misinterpreting or neglecting, um, their religious duties. Um, because they tended to treat, uh, people in the outer lying areas outside of cities um, more poorly than they did urban populations. And in particular, that affected the Fulani more than anybody else. So Danforio became sort of this, excuse me, social and religious organizer, um, who really focused on kind of overthrowing the economic elite in Hausa city-states and, um, sort of pushing for a more widespread, um, in some ways fundamental, uh, orthodox interpretation of Islam, but with a real emphasis on sort of like, um, the role of Zakhat, alms giving, right? Um, the notion of giving back to the poor. Um, and so Danforio is, is really responsible for the overthrow of the existing Hausa elite in the 19th century and the creation thereof of the Sokoto Caliphate. However, the Sokoto Caliphate, as we discussed at the beginning of this unit, um, the Sokoto Caliphate was not always so, um, interested in maintaining its, uh, sort of radical social justice origins because it gets so tied up in the transatlantic slave trade. Um, largely as a result of the fact that, um, trade networks to the north, um, had collapsed, the Trans-Saharan trade networks that connected sort of the Hausa city-states to places like Songhai, um, and others, um, other kingdoms further to the north. Um, those trade networks had collapsed largely as a result of European interference. Um, and instead, trade was congregating more towards the Atlantic coast, particularly in the Bight of Benin, um, and, uh, the general, yeah, Gold Coast region. And as a result of that, um, that really kind of drove the market south. And that meant that the Sokoto Caliphate really in order to survive economically needed to connect itself back down to the coast. And the thing that Europeans were trading in and were interested in purchasing were not things, but were rather people. And so at its height, by the middle of the 19th century, the Sokoto Caliphate, um, was dealing heavily in human labor. Um, and about a third of its overall population was enslaved. Um, so yeah, um, slavery, it's, okay. Um, let's see here. Jordan also wants to know, what is ancestor veneration? Okay, that's a really great question. Ancestor veneration is hopefully a term you sort of remember from AP World. Pretend like that's true, okay? So ancestor veneration is sometimes called ancestor worship, but it doesn't always really get to the heart of it. Um, so you can think of it as ancestor worship if that's what like helps it click in your head. But essentially ancestor veneration is honoring one's lineage, um, back to the past. Um, and doing that through remembering one's family history and sometimes making offerings or, um, praying to ancestors to intercede on one's behalf. This is really common in West Africa and frankly, throughout a lot of different regions of the world. Um, in West Africa in particular, in a lot of, um, say, Yoruba speaking areas and Igbo speaking areas prior to Christianization. Um, frequently what you would have is, um, you would have reliquaries, um, objects which would contain either, um, items related to the person who had passed or actually, um, uh, maybe ashes if you cremated or, you know, bones or something like that. They were usually carved wooden objects, um, and people carried them with them. If their tribes moved, they had great power spiritually speaking. Um, frequently, when people practice ancestor veneration before any major significant event, um, you make offerings of some sort to your ancestors. Um, in East Asia, you do this by like lighting incense in places like the Caribbean or West Africa, which obviously are connected, um, through the diaspora, diaspora created through slavery. Um, sometimes this means that you take a mouthful of a drink and then spit it out onto the ground, um, essentially giving it to your ancestors, or you leave food out for your ancestors, um, like an ofrenda, like in Mexico, which is a totally different thing, but we'll get to that eventually. Um, so I hope that helps. Uh, essentially, it tends to tie in more closely with societies that are animistic or shamanistic, although there are many places that still add elements of ancestor veneration, even if they adopt, say, Christianity. Mexico, I am looking at you with Dia de los Muertos, right? Um, let's see here. Uh, Ken Sarawiwa, excellent question. Who was Ken Sarawiwa? Um, so Ken Sarawiwa was a major figure in terms of criticizing Nigeria's political system in the 1980s. Um, he was an outspoken critic and journalist. And in particular, Sarawiwa, um, was involved in calling out the excesses and, um, political abuses of Sunny Abacha. Sunny Abacha was the last, um, military leader of Nigeria prior to the writing of the 1999 constitution. Um, and Sunny Abacha, remember, was, uh, the fellow who had his own private security force that was trained in North Korea, we talked about this. Um, and he used a lot of public execution as a means of intimidation. So Sarawiwa was a really virulent critic of his regime. And in particular, he was very, very critical of the role of, um, oil industries in Nigeria and it's, um, the role of petroleum companies in propping up Sunny Abacha's regime. In particular, he really dialed in on Shell. Shell oil was not his favorite. Um, as a result of this, because Sunny Abacha basically drew all of his power from the fact that, um, he didn't really need to, you know, he, he had very low, he had a high degree of autonomy. He didn't really have any responsiveness to the people in Nigeria, um, in the, the late eighties, early nineties. And, uh, sorry, um, mid, mid eighties, early nineties, my apologies. Um, and as a result of that, um, he just really dialed in on oil profits. So Sarawiwa criticizing sort of the underhanded dealings that were going on with regards to oil profits in Nigeria, um, as well as the environmental degradation that went along with it, um, that made him very much a target, um, of the Abacha regime. And he was arrested, um, accused essentially of treason, and then he was executed. And, um, it prompted massive international outcry. Um, Sarawiwa was pretty well respected by the international community, particularly the UN and a number of journalistic, um, uh, groups. And as a result of his execution, um, he, there was a pushback by the international community. There were sanctions for a couple of years. Um, and I do believe that, um, Nigeria's membership in the African Union was suspended for a period of time, although I would have to double check on that. Um, so hopefully that helps. Um, Sarawiwa's son, actually, Ken Sarawiwa Junior, um, is involved in, or was involved in the Good Luck Jonathan administration. Um, so his son is very politically active as well. And one of the things he's continued is kind of, you know, the, the criticism of the oil industry in Nigeria. Um, so let's see here. Uh, what is the importance of the 2007 and 2011 elections in Nigeria? Okay, all right. Um, my apologies. So the 2007 elections were, I'm going to look up his name so I don't mispronounce it, guys. Um, I think it's Yaardua, but I just want to double check. I'm pretty sure that here Nigerian election. Okay, I just don't want to mislead you here. Yes, I was right, excellent. Okay, so what happened was in 2007, the presidential candidate was a fellow by the name of, I'm trying to pronounce it correctly here, Umaru Yaardua. And I think I'm saying that so wrong, and I do apologize. Um, and he was, uh, he was running under the PDP, that's the People's Democratic Party. Um, and it was probably the most corrupt election that has occurred under the current operating constitution. Terrible election. Um, generally speaking, election observers, um, absolutely declare it to be an illegitimate election. Um, there was vote rigging, there was violence, people stole ballot boxes. Um, so Yaardua came to power under really fuzzy circumstances. It was not a good look. Um, however, while he was in power, Yaardua was not actually a terrible leader. Um, he came to power in an extremely rigged sort of way, very, very undemocratic. But, but he actually kind of, um, put into place a number of anti-corruption probes into the government to kind of like cut it down. Also, he pushed for the creation of an independent electoral commission that would oversee, um, how elections in Nigeria would be run from that point onward. So while he was elected in a really corrupt sort of way, broadly, people tend to think of him as actually not that bad of a leader once he got into power. However, Yaardua died in office. He died, um, hey, let me double check on what date it was when he died. Um, he died in office. Um, and that was a real problem because obviously, uh, Nigeria has had major problems with like, um, continuing the movement of like, um, like peaceful transitions of power. Um, so when he died, um, what happened was, why is this not working? Come on, there we go, there we go. Um, so he died in May of 2010, and that meant that his term was finished off by his successor, um, Good Luck Jonathan. So Good Luck Jonathan initially became president of Nigeria, not because he was elected, but because he was vice president and he kind of slid in there. Um, so Good Luck Jonathan became his successor. And then the 2011 elections were the first time that Good Luck Jonathan actually ran for office. So the 2007 elections, very, very corrupt. 2011 considered to be generally speaking, a little bit better, um, not quite as corrupt. Although there was a lot of concern about the fact that Good Luck Jonathan was succeeding, um, a president who was also from his party. Um, that was considered to be a little bit weird, although, um, Umaru Yaardua was, I'm saying that wrong now, Umaru Yaardua, why is this so hard to say? Um, he, uh, he was Muslim and he was from the north. And Good Luck Jonathan is from the south. So there, we're kind of doing that flip flop thing that Nigeria frequently does, where one president's from the north, the next one's expected to be from the south. And that's one of the reasons why Good Luck Jonathan was considered to be so unpopular. At the end of his term, there were other problems involved. But, um, when he ran again in 2015, because he could have two terms and he hadn't been elected twice, he'd only served as president kind of like for one year and then was reelected there. Um, so he still constitutionally could run, but a lot of Nigerians felt like that was a, a violation of the implicit contract because Yaardua was from the north, Good Luck Jonathan was from the south, so clearly the next president should be from the north. Um, and that might be one of the major reasons why Mohammed Ubahari actually won the 2015 election was because of that sort of implicit assumption of like going back and forth. So give me half a second here, I want to check Twitter because I haven't done that yet. Okay, so if you are watching this live, and I do see that there are a few of you, hi, Kalen, um, I will answer your questions in just a second. Okay, um, so give me a second here. Okay, Miss Delhay likes that, but she didn't, okay, all right. Okay. Okay, I'm not seeing any questions coming in over Twitter. It doesn't mean it's not there. Well, I mean theoretically, it's supposed to mean it's not there. Um, let me check on remind because I do have a couple of other ones. And then I will get to Kalen's if nobody else. Okay. All right. Okay, so let's see here. Kalen, I'm gonna get to you, and then I have one from Caitlin as well that I'm gonna answer here. Um, so Kalen wants to know, two, two, two. Um, let's see here. Can I explain the significance of 1983 in terms of presidential elections? Sure, I can totally do that. Okay, um, 1983 is also super important because that's the year I was born. So obviously, it's the best year. Yep, um, which means I am old, okay? Um, so 1983 is important. Say 1983, or does it say 1993, honey? Can you double check for me? I don't have, I, I might need to pull my thing up because it might be a typo here. Because I am thinking it's 1993. Pretty sure that's true. Oh, okay, no, 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 I gotcha, I gotcha. I know it was, they're both important years. Okay, all right, so 1983 in Nigeria, um, is not a great year for them. It is the year of yet another military coup d'etat, um, which should surprise like absolutely nobody. So what had occurred was you had the craziness of the Biafran civil war leading into the military dictatorships of the 1970s, going all the way up to 1979. Okay, in 1979, the military leader was, um, Obasanjo. I'm saying that incorrectly, but we're gonna pretend like it's correct, okay? Um, so Obasanjo, he was in charge, and in 1979, he had a new constitution written and voluntarily stepped down, okay? So Obasanjo steps down and there were, there were presidential elections and a new president stepped in from 1979 until 1983. And what occurred in 1983 was that you had, I'm trying to look up the name here because I cannot remember off the top of my head because I am bad right now. Um, and what happened in 1983 was the fellow who was president, um, held presidential elections as were required in 1983, and he lost. And he decided he did not want to lose. So what happened was the president whose name was Shugu Shagari, uh, Shahu Shagari, rather, he lost the election because he falsified the vote. Um, and as a result of that, um, they stuffed ballot boxes, all sorts of stuff, and he got caught. Um, and as a result of that, there was a military coup d'etat that overthrew Shagari, and that military coup d'etat was led by Mohammed Ubahari, who is the current president of Nigeria. Then, this is what I was confusing Kalen, so I apologize. So you have, uh, Shahu Shagari, who comes to power, um, from 79 to 83. He's overthrown by Mohammed Ubahari. Ubahari is in power from 83 to 85. After 85, you have Babangida, who comes to power. Babangida is in charge of Nigeria from 1985 all the way up until 1993, um, where he briefly institutes a presidential election. He's like, let's have a presidential election, let's do this constitution thing. Lasts for about a second and a half, and then the newly governed, uh, elected government is overthrown by Sunny Abacha, Abacha's then military dictator, up until 1998 when he dies. And then we have the new constitution, and that is the operating system we have been working under ever since. So hopefully I've clarified my goof earlier there. Um, so let's see here. Yeah, Kalen, I, I see. earlier there. So let's see here. Yeah, Kalen, I see what you're talking about there. All right. Kalen wants to know, you were talking about the flip flop between the north and south for elections. Is the West ever recurring or are they rare occurrence? The major concern really in terms of like political divisions is more north versus south, rather than sort of like talking about Yoruba versus Igbo. Because a significant population of people who are Yoruba are also Christian, just like the Igbo. So there's less of a cultural divide there. But there is a minority of Yoruba population that is still polytheistic, animistic, practice a lot of ancestor veneration. So there are cultural divides there. But it's seen as a bigger sort of regional divide and wealth disparity between the north versus the south. So hopefully that helps. Let's see here. Who else is, has got some questions for me? I'm running out, guys, right now. I don't have a lot of people asking questions. So as soon as I run out, I will stop this. Okay. So this would be where, if you are watching live, hi, oh, how, how many people do I have? Not many. But if you are out there and you have questions or you would like me to answer other ones, perhaps text your friends and say, hey, send a question into Ms. Galloway so she can get to it. Kalen also asked a question here. She said, why are there so many military coups? Why does the military leaders keep reaching power in Nigeria? Hang on a second. So that's a great question. So there's a couple of major reasons why. I would say number one has a lot to do with the notion that you've got weekly institutionalized rule of law. If, like, remember when we rank ordered the problems or the things that you need in Nigeria to have a stable and effective government? And most of you guys put like rule of law way up top. And I tend to agree with you. Because rule of law is where people acknowledge that the law is like this continuing entity that exists outside of man. It exists outside of us. So it doesn't matter whether or not we like the person in power. If they break the law, they broke the law. There's no special do-over because you're a nice dude, or because you're a bad dude. Like, if you broke the law, you broke the law. The law is this absolute concept. And remember, it only matters if we all agree that it does. So rule of law is really important because it means that people accept the notion that when something bad happens, this is the system that we are going to follow, and it's always going to be this way. But in Nigeria, because of the early military actions that occur with the Biafran Civil War, as a result of the ethnic divisions in Nigeria, which I think we can really kind of pin down to being sort of a post-imperial problem, that those borders are really artificial. As a result of that, there is this notion that the solutions to problems in Nigeria can't be found in bodies of law. Instead, it has to be found in the military. So the Nigerian military additionally was well-supplied, well-trained, and active at the time of, of decolonization. This was really common for the British. They frequently used people in their colonies as military forces to kind of control the area. You would have to do a whole lot of recruiting and bring a whole lot of people in Britain down to Nigeria or over to India or wherever you were going, if you wanted to keep the peace there. So instead, what happened was the British would establish relationships between, say, the tribal people that they were trying to control, and, you know, the, the white British officers who would sort of establish the military. So at the time of independence, there was already a pretty active and established Western-style military in Nigeria as a result of the British colonial efforts. Like, the British used Nigerian soldiers in World War I. And I don't think they were at Dunkirk in World War II. There were French African soldiers at, you know, but like, colonial forces frequently created militaries to help them with peacekeeping in the area. So like, the military was well-institutionalized, rule of law was not. And, and I think that that's one thing that, that has kind of been established is like, it was a ladder up for a lot of people. So being in the military was considered to be a high-status thing. It was something that indicated that you were well-educated, that you had connections to Britain, you were civilized. And as a result of that, it was sort of honorable. There's this notion that maybe the military can solve problems that other people can't. So hopefully that helps a little bit there. Let's see here. Okay. Let me see if I've got anything else coming in. Oh, good. Abby's got a question for me. All right. Duh, duh, duh. Let's see here. Okay. So Abby, I've got your questions here. Abby wants to know, how does the Bantu migration impact Nigeria? Well, his, like, like current Nigeria? A little bit. Primarily because most of the languages in Sub-Saharan Africa, and specifically in Nigeria, are related to each other. They're part of the broader Bantu-based language family. The Bantu speaking peoples kind of originated a little bit further, south and west. Trying to think where they'd be today. Like, eh, west, Western Cameroon? No, no, sorry. South and east. My apologies. My geography is terrible. Sort of like southeastern Cameroon, sort of like over that way. So the Bantu-based, Bantu-speaking people were early agriculturalists in Sub-Saharan Africa. They developed iron-making tools and a lot of plowing and agricultural practices that allowed their populations to explode. And sometime around about 1,000 BCE, they started migrating out of sort of the West African sort of Gold Coast region. And they tended to move south, and they tended to move further to the east. And as a result, they spread Bantu-based languages, toolmaking, all sorts of stuff. You don't really need to know that necessarily for the test, but it wouldn't hurt you to know that all of the different ethnic groups that we are talking about here, they have incredible, incredible commonalities in part, because most of them are heavily influenced by Bantu-based languages and cultural practices. So even though we talk about how different a lot of them are, the differences are mostly, they are the most notable when you are of that group, and when we are talking about distinct local practices. To an outsider, they don't seem that different. The languages seem very similar. There seem to be more cultural similarities than differences as a whole, which perhaps explains maybe why the British didn't really think too much about just like lumping them all together. Although, obviously, that was really problematic. So that would be my short answer with regards to the Bantu migration. Don't really have to know too much about it. I just wanted to touch base on it with regards to political history here. So let's see here. I've already answered the 2007 and 2011 election question. And soft targets versus flaring. Okay. So actually, we're going to talk more about soft targets next, excuse me. We'll talk more about soft targets next unit when we talk about terrorism and political violence. But soft targets are broadly known, are usually within the context of terror activities. And a soft target is one that is civilian-based. So a shopping mall is a soft target. An Ariana Grande concert is a soft target. A military barracks is a hard target. A police, a police station is a hard target. So a hard target is a place where you're not dealing with the civilian population, where you're dealing with people who are either militarized or capable of defending themselves. A soft target is generally things like schools. Okay. And this is included in your vocabulary for this one, in your study guide here, largely as a result of the fact that we can talk about soft targets with regards to Boko Haram. Boko Haram tends to target soft targets. They don't tend to attack military barracks. They tend to kidnap girls from boarding schools, that sort of thing. If you've been paying attention to the news, there's been an interesting bit of a storyline for the past month and two days. About a month ago, something like 101 girls were kidnapped out of a small village in northeastern Nigeria, because Boko Haram objects to education for women, particularly Western-style education. However, as I was driving home today, just before I jumped online to do this study session for you guys, they reported that the girls had been returned, which is interesting. There's a lot of kind of questioning as to whether or not this is the main group of Boko Haram that even carried out the kidnapping of these girls, or if it was kind of like the super hardline group that has been kind of isolated by the rest. So yeah, soft targets is largely in there, Abby, as a result of Boko Haram. But Boko Haram should tie us back into the broader question of fundamentalism, which you should also know a lot about for the purposes of your test coming up on Friday. So I do want to get to, I have not answered, let's see here. I have not answered, let's, helps if I put the mic back down, I'm sorry. I've not answered, I don't think, Kalen, Caitlin, I think I've left her off. So I do want to kind of address that. Okay, so. So Caitlin wanted to know about, hang on, let me double check Twitter while I'm at it. Caitlin wanted to know about the difference between MEND and MOSOP. Okay, M E N D and M O S O P. These are the acronyms. Okay. So when we are talking about MEND in Nigeria, we are primarily talking about the Movement for the Emancipation of the Niger Delta. And it is a militant group. Okay. It is kind of in the continued history of the Biafran Civil War. This is a group that really feels that the Niger Delta is a very different place from the rest of Nigeria as a whole, and that they deserve to be independent. So you can kind of lump them if we're trying to like compare and contrast them with groups that want to be separate. You could think of them like Chechnya in the Russian Federation, maybe the Uighur population in China. They see themselves as distinctly different, although their difference is primarily not just religious, but rather ethnic. Additionally, we're talking primarily about a number of states in the southmostern, southmostern, wow, that's not even a word, southernmost region of Nigeria. And what they really are focused on is oil. That's what they want. They really want reparations for the government as a result of the oil industry down there. They want to be able to take full control over the oil industry. This is the area that has had the greatest number of spills, the most tapping of the pipelines. And yeah, so MEND is primarily looking at independence, or at least autonomy, for the Niger Delta region. Yeah. So that's what they're going for. They have engaged in kidnapping, guerrilla warfare, guerrilla warfare. And they do sabotage oil lines frequently. Sometimes they will blow up refineries, all sorts of stuff. Generally speaking, they are not opposed to using violence. There's, it's worth noting that a lot of the young men who are involved in both MOSOP and in MEND are unemployed. They don't have jobs. And one of the big criticisms of the oil industry in southern Nigeria is that frequently on the drilling platforms and in the refineries and such, most of the employees aren't Nigerian. Many of them are from other places, many of them are British, but they're not necessarily Nigerian. So they're not hiring local. And that might be one of the major reasons for kind of the objection to this. So that's one, one group. So you asked about MOSOP as well. And MOSOP is a particular group that is focused around one ethnic group. That's the big difference between MEND and MOSOP. So MOSOP is Movement for the Survival of Ogoni People. And the, it's a social movement essentially. And it's primarily addressing one indigenous population in southern Nigeria. And it's in the central Niger Delta region, which is one of those areas that is badly, badly, badly hit by kind of the oil industry. They technically advocate in favor of nonviolent resistance to sort of the continued drilling and piping of oil across their lands. However, there have been violent incidents attached to them. Generally speaking, though, I would say that MEND is more violent than MOSOP. That's where I would go with that. So there you go. Hopefully, that helps Caitlin. Let's see here. My apologies. Okay. So Kalen wanted to know, how is needs the National Economic Empowerment Development Strategy important? Okay, that's a really good question. And I'm leaning in so far here. Okay. So in 2003, the Nigerian government decided to put into place needs, which is, as Kalen just noted, the National Economic Empowerment, wait, I'm, National Economic Empowerment Development Strategy. Yep, I need it in front of me, otherwise they get it wrong. So they put this into place in 2003. And one of the big things that needs was supposed to do was to work on kind of trying to force the Nigerian economy away from its resource trap. Not terribly successful there. But one thing that it has been fairly decent about is requiring bureaucracies in Nigeria to actually account for the money that they are spending. They require annual audits of most of the government bureaucracies. So you have to see where the money is going. This was largely in reaction to the Sunny Abacha period up until 1998. If you remember, Abacha was the military leader slash, he called himself president, but he was a military dictator. He was the one who was responsible for personally siphoning off something like $6 billion with a B. And as, like, because of the fact that there's a lot of sort of obfuscation of funds in the Nigerian government around oil. So needs was really supposed to make things more clear as to where money was going, and therefore make the government more effective in its spendings. Mixed results, although generally speaking, anytime you encourage auditing and encourage like people to be accountable for their funds, generally speaking, that's a good thing. So we can say that that is a step forward in the correct direction. To be fair, a lot of that sort of push was largely as a result of kind of a international pressure through the IMF and World Bank in order to kind of continue to, continue to qualify for international loans. Okay. So where are we here? And Kalen also wants to know, why is Boko Haram prevalent in rural areas? Well, that is an excellent question, and one that I would really recommend that you go back and you look at the Harkness Discussion article that you had about Boko Haram. It was the first Harkness that we did. So Boko Haram is like the, the name itself, hopefully you remember, literally translates to Western education is forbidden, although most people who adhere to kind of like the structure of Boko Haram, see it more as like Western culture rather than just education. And it is, as we've noted, a fundamentalist group, okay? And fundamentalism in the context of, of what we've been talking about this unit, where fundamentalism becomes the political ideology. It is a political ideology. The Articles of Faith are the ideology. They're not like added to it. It's not something separate. You can't tease out politics and religion anymore. Now, what I would say is that to understand why Boko Haram functions the way it does, and why it operates primarily in rural areas that are so poor, I think what you really have to do is look back at what fundamentalism is and what its purpose is and why it exists. So fundamentalism largely in the context of what we see today, is something that has developed, I would say, really out of a post-Cold War, post-colonial sort of environment. Frequently, what happened was after decolonization in the 1950s and 1960s, these newly independent states were considered to be sort of like fair game for both the USSR and the United States to kind of play their sort of proxy wars out. Everybody was supposed to choose a side. You've probably heard the terms first world, second world, third world. Third world is a bit of a pejorative. We really shouldn't use it to describe places. But I'll give you the context as to how and why those terms are used. So first world pertains to the United States and its allies. And obviously, these are terms that are developed in the US, which is why we get to be number one, because we're always number one. So the US and its allies during the Cold World were the first world. And then the second world was the USSR and its allies. And then the third world was everybody else, which is like deeply insulting. So there was this notion that the third world all had to choose teams. And they were either going to have to adhere to sort of like the liberal democratic pro-capitalist side with the US, or they were going to have to adhere to sort of like the command economy, or it's not fully command, but whatever, but mostly command economy and sort of centralized government wrapped up in Marxist-Leninist thought of the USSR. Those were kind of your options. And essentially, what happens is fundamentalism really starts to develop in the late 1960s, early 1970s, particularly in places like the Middle East, but also in some places in Africa and Asia, where you see people basically saying neither of those systems address our problems. And it is a rejection. Fundamentalism is a rejection of existing political ideologies. They say conservatism, that's an attitude, my apologies. They say conservatism, that's an attitude, my apologies. They say, you know, liberalism doesn't work for us, communism isn't working for us, social democracy is not effective for us, anarchism doesn't work for anybody, let's be real, and fascism is just all-around terrible. So if all of those things don't work for us, what ideology can solve our problems? And that's where people start putting forth fundamentalism. And I think that it's really important that we always remember that when we are talking about fundamentalism, we are not talking about something that is backwards or old-fashioned. We are talking about something that is designed to deal with the problems of the modern world. And in northeastern Nigeria, the problems of the modern world are food scarcity, high rates of unemployment, lots of illiteracy, all sorts of things. And it appears that the Nigerian state has failed those people. But if you adhere to a notion of, you know, like religion as your operating principle, perhaps that can provide the services and the support that the government has failed to do so. And I think particularly with regards to Islam, in the context of Boko Haram, Islam is, puts such a primacy on community with the creation of the Oma, the community of believers, the notion of zakat, almsgiving, to care for people who are less fortunate than you. And also the notion of sort of, to a degree, the equality of believers. I think that that's a really attractive sort of proposition. So as a political ideologies, those, as a political ideology, those are principles that can help solve problems. And so I think with regards to Boko Haram, what you're seeing is it becomes more attractive the less you have. When you don't have things, then this institution, however radical it is, however reactionary it is, and I would say that Boko Haram is both radical and reactionary, it seems to solve modern problems. And I think that that's why it is so prevalent up in the Northeast, although they have lost a lot of territory recently. So let's see here, do I have any other questions developing? Do, do, do. Let me check Remind here. Good, okay. All right. So Mackenzie wants to know, hi, Migsy. Mackenzie wants to know about the Washington consensus and how it relates to Nigeria. Okay, so the Washington consensus is the general notion that liberal democracy and capitalism is the way to go. And, that sounds terrible. Generally speaking, I tend to agree with the Washington consensus, although not perfect. So the Washington consensus is kind of this notion that, yeah, that capitalism, liberal democracy, those are the ways things should go. And it's largely coming out of the modernization theory. Remember that, like, the more developed economically, the more capitalistic economically a country becomes, the more it will tend towards a liberal democratic secular society, which obviously Engelhart's Value Survey tells us that that's not exactly how anything works. But yeah, Washington consensus is this notion that everything's going to, that this is the way things should work. That is an opposition to a lot of the political doctrines that developed in the 1920s, moving up to the 1950s, most notably Marxist-Leninist thought. Today, I would say that the Washington consensus is basically one of the motivating factors for the creation of the 1999 Constitution. If you look at the 1999 Constitution and compare it with, say, the United States Constitution, the similarities are really obvious. It's very clear that what's happening is that the government that is created in 99 as a result of the Constitution is largely trying to adhere to sort of like Western American political values, Western European political values, and that they're kind of trying to bring over this notion of a Washington consensus into Nigeria. Whether or not that plays out is really up to a lot of debate right now. I mean, it really has to see, we really have to see how the Constitution plays out. We are only at this point, we're not even 20 years out from the writing of the Constitution. That's not a whole lot of time to see how it'll really kind of develop in terms of rule of law. So there you go. And then, let's see here. I may be reaching the end of my questions here, guys. I'm going to tweet out, not tweet out, I'm going to send out an announcement real quick. But if you have any further questions, go ahead and you can type them in. Why is this doing that? You can go ahead and type it into the chat log. You can send me things through, yeah. You can send me things through Twitter, I'll check Twitter in just a moment. Okay. Stop that. And let me send out a quick notification to everybody that I need more questions. Otherwise, I will stop. Okay, so that's sent out, let me check Twitter real quick. I need a better screen setup. Okay. Do I have any notifications coming in here? Not seeing any. Okay, I don't see anything on Twitter right now. Let's see here. Oh, no, Caitlin, don't apologize for asking questions, okay? And please don't type anything in while you're driving, honey, that's a terrible idea. You don't need to take responsibility for other people not asking questions, so don't worry about it, okay, kid? Do I think that Nigeria follows its constitution? Well, nope, I don't. Because I don't think that they are really instituting judicial review. And I think until you have judicial review with the notion that laws can and should be checked on a regular basis, I really don't think that you have a truly functioning constitution. Because judicial review means that you have established this notion of rule of law and that some things are acceptable and some things are not. And you start building up that body of case law that gives you further sort of institutionalization of government. So currently, no, I don't think so. I think the bigger question will be how this next electoral cycle plays out, because there'll be another presidential election next year. That one could be pretty interesting. Bukhari isn't well, I would be very surprised if he ran again if he lives that long. And with that in mind, I think it will be very interesting to see whether or not they continue flip-flopping from north to south Christian-Muslim in terms of the presidency or what they'll do instead. I think what would be fascinating to me is if there is a second Muslim northern president elected in the wake of Muhammadu Bakari, and he has political will and support from people who aren't of his party. I think if that happens, then I feel a lot more comfortable about stuff. But until they work out their judicial system and until their legislature actually starts drafting legislation that just isn't sort of rubber-stamped by the president or written, you know, at the behest of the president, then, no, I don't think their constitution means a whole heck of a lot yet. Let's see here. Okay. I am going to give you guys one more minute to try and come up with some questions for me. And then I'm going to sign off. It's about an hour's worth of study session, which is certainly better than nothing, although this is the lowest turnout rate I have had so far for your study session. So that's not particularly encouraging. But while I'm waiting to see if I see any questions, oh, Caitlin wants to know, do I think another coup is possible if the next election doesn't turn out a certain way? Yeah, I think it's possible. I think until the military stops being sort of like the path that people take to get to power, I think that that's a real possibility. I also think that Boko Haram up in the Northeast doesn't help that problem. Because the central government is frequently trying to prevent Boko Haram from taking power in areas, fighting it back and preventing it from holding territory. And that means that they have to have an active military all the time. And it means frequently that there's a lot of sort of active military stationing throughout the northeast of Nigeria. And as a result of that, you wind up with a lot of people who start to equate sort of military occupation with legitimate governance. And I think that that's quite dangerous. So yeah, I think a military coup d'etat is always on the table for a while. I certainly hope not here, but yeah. And unlike some of your classmates, I'm not okay with military coups. Some of you guys seem surprisingly okay with the notion of military coup d'états. I'm not okay with that. So let's see here, that has been a minute, okay? And I haven't seen any new questions come in, even though I sent out a notice, all right? So I'm going to assume that that means you feel pretty comfortable with this material. Maybe? Possibly? All right? So do me a favor, go back, study your study guide. It's linked on the blog if you haven't picked up a copy for me yet. But it is up on the blog, so do make sure you grab that, okay? And I will see you guys, some of you tomorrow, and the rest I will see on Friday. So study hard, good luck, bonne chance, buena suerte.